Matt. Hi.
Get into rhetoric for our.
Welcome to the fourth meeting of the year. Today is February twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Alyssa, please read the publication.
In compliance with chapter two thirty one of public law nineteen seventy five, notice that this meeting to be held at the criminal justice building sixty one Main Street South River has been published in Hollis Tribune on January fifth, twenty twenty five. Post on municipal bulletin bulletin board, over our website, the front door of the criminal justice building at sixty one Main Street South River.
Whoa.
Mary Gindi.
Here.
Councilon Valles.
Here.
Councilman DeSantis.
Here.
Councilman DeZimian.
Here.
Councilman Janakopoulos.
Here.
Councilman Gertensky.
Here.
Council President Seula.
Here.
Please stand for a second.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for a moment of silence. You may be seated. We have one presentation today by C D M Smith. He's here just to give us a report on what has been done so far with our water lines. Mister, uh. Unflin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. So, um, we captured four inches and six inch water main extension project, uh, replacement project. We, um, have received today the data from C M E on the information that we requested. I need to review it. Surveying started approximately in one week. We're supposed to start this week with this now that we had. It got delayed a couple of weeks. They're going to set up points and then start doing the survey around town. Uh, test pits and, um, development of the plant and the test pits. Uh, we submitted to the subcontractor all the locations. A hundred and seven locations were found. Uh, fourteen have, uh, some history in different, uh, conditions of, uh, gas stations and something that might show up for something. But that's inside some of the road. We're not expecting anything like that. But it's been scheduled on the road opening permit. Uh, for the county and for the town, it's been, uh, to be requested very shortly. Lord application, the project is within the law. We worked with Joe and with Art on, uh, getting the project enlisted in B E P. We are, uh, going to schedule a pre-application meeting within a week or two. We need to coordinate with them, the different groups that are part of their review process. And, uh, if you need anything, uh, from me, just send me an email, call me, and we'll address the situation as it develops.
I very appreciate it. Thank you for the right.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to the agenda sessions. Uh, we have four for second reading. Um, Andrew, if you could, uh, touch upon our zoning.
Sure, uh, twenty twenty five dash four, that's the zoning ordinance, uh, for your retail campus licenses. And just for everybody's awareness, Hilliandee's Board did consider this. They came back with a recommendation. Uh, the recommendation is to amend one small portion of it. It's not material change to the ordinance. Uh, for the record, it's, uh, a recommendation to amend. It's three fifty dash eight T subsection H, subsection two, subsection A. It is to include the sentence, this subsection shall not include any lot with frontage on Main Street.
Um, depending calendar, I guess, Joe.
Yep. Uh, this is the cap bank ordinance. It's done annually, uh, gives the borough flexibility during the budget process. And if not used during this budget, it's capped in bank for future budgets.
And then the next one would be the, uh, improvements.
A C D. Yep, so it's a H D funding number received. It's a capital ordinance. It's for the Caspi Park security improvements and for, um, safety improvements at four way intersections.
That's great. Andrea, I know the next one is about the redevelopment plan.
Yeah, twenty twenty five dash seven is the redevelopment, uh, amendment to the redevelopment plan for twenty five Main Street.
Thank you. Um, for first reading, we're gonna be talking about the water, Joe.
Yes, their first reading of a water reordinance, uh, budget committee met a few times, and this is a recommendation needed two thousand, two thousand twenty five budget.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go into second reading now. Uh, Alyssa, can please read twenty twenty five dash four.
Orders twenty twenty five dash four, ordinance of Borough South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey. Amendment chapter three fifty of the Borough Code of the Borough South River entitled zoning.
Big motion wait before reading.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman DeZimian.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll open this to the public. Uh, five minutes. Please state your name and address. First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Valles.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council discussion, anyone? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Valles.
Mister Mayor, can I have a motion to accept the recommendation of anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion I'll second that.
Motion by Councilwoman Valles, seconded by Council President Seula.
Councilon Valles.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
I abstain.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Um, all right, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Valles, seconded by Council President Seula.
Councilon Valles.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash five.
Orders twenty twenty five dash five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget of recreation limits and to establish a cap bank for calendar year twenty twenty five.
Make a motion wait before reading.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman DeZimian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second.
Motion to close public.
Motion. Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Valles.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any council discussion? Do I have a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Valles, seconded by Council President Seula.
Councilman Valles.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash six.
Orders twenty twenty five dash six, of orders authorizing various federal housing community development grant improvements. An equipment located in the Borough South River in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Make a motion wait before reading, second.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman DeZimian.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Motion by Council President Seula. Seconded by Councilman Krasinski.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to open this to the council discussion. Motion to approve, second. Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilman DeSantis.
Councilwoman Valles.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
Alyssa, twenty twenty five dash seven.
Orders twenty twenty five dash seven, ordinance of the Borough South River, County Middlesex, State of New Jersey, adopting amendments to sub area one fifty two of the lower Main Street redevelopment plan.
Motion wait before reading.
Second.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Valles.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to open this to the public. First call, second call.
Motion to close public.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Council, Councilman DeSantis.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Council discussion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Valles, seconded by Councilman Krasinski.
Councilon Valles.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
This is what I want to first reading, twenty twenty five dash eight.
Orders twenty twenty five dash eight, ordinance to amend the code of the Borough South River, chapter one fifty five entitled fees by amending section one fifty five dash thirty, chapter thirty four.
Mayor, I move it to council pass. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash eight on its first reading by title only and is currently authorized to publish the same as required by law. With a second reading and public hearing to be held at seven P M on March the tenth, twenty twenty five, by video conference via Zoom in the council chambers. The Criminal Justice Building at sixty one Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Um, motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Councilwoman Valles.
Councilon Valles.
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis.
Yes.
Councilman DeZimian.
Yes.
Councilman Janakopoulos.
Yes.
Councilman Gertensky.
Yes.
Council President Seula.
Yes.
We're gonna go into reports. Uh, Bruce Kutch is not here today, but Eric Roberts is standing in for C M E. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, for the N J D O T fiscal year twenty twenty three local aid program, and N J D O T fiscal year twenty twenty four local aid program. The contractor has put to work on all due weather. Leonardine Avenue has been built and paved. Balance of the road will be completed in the spring. Bruce did speak to the contractor about the Leonardine Avenue and Shine Fine Avenue curb grant funding issues. And I'm here to working with the contractor to have that resolved and come up with the best approach to resolve it. For the N J D O T fiscal year twenty twenty three local transportation projects grant, they're working on the project design. For the N J D O T fiscal year twenty twenty five local aid program, uh, C M E submitted a proposal for a professional service associated with same. For the twenty twenty three electrical substation maintenance, contractor is working on the reports, which will be submitted to us when they are completed. The N J D E B stormwater assistance grant application, uh, C M E submitted a proposal addressing the twenty twenty five requirements and proposal for a services.
Council anything for, for others? Uh, Joe?
There are two resolutions. The first one is a H C D transfer resolution. There's a line item that has money in it that would transfer to a different line item, so we can spend it and get reimbursed from the county. And the next one is a community resolution to fire remedial solutions to do out building collections for water and electric. We went out to bid twice. We were the only bidder. We rejected the bid twelve times. We negotiated with them. Now we're authorized and agreeing with them to begin on March first. It won't take over right away in March first. It takes four or five months to get through the whole entire process, so it's still gonna be a couple of hiccups along the way, but this is the first step to getting a new company in.
Thank you. Um, this would probably resolve this question, then. I know that quite a few people have been asking about having credit cards.
Okay. Yeah, so I think once this company comes in, once the water meters are all taken care of and are all in place and stuff, I think we start looking at other things like monthly billing, both water and electric and so forth, you know. But we gotta get the water meters in, operating person, this new company in, so. I mean, I don't see any happening until probably more towards the end of the year, or the next year, you know, but that could be something, yeah.
Um, council, anything for Joe? I'm gonna go to the, like, police chief.
Mayor, I only got two things. Uh, consent resolution number ninety five is the appointment of crossing guard. It's the appointment of crossing guard Milton Morton. Uh, he's filling the vacancy that was created by retirement of Carol Sullivan, who was a crossing guard here for twenty years and retired at the end of December last year. Uh, the other thing I have is this Thursday at six P M right here in the police department is our neighborhood watch program meeting. Uh, if you're interested in any current prevention strategies or, you know, the safety of your neighborhood, I suggest you, uh, be here for that time. Uh, we'll have a few officers here, a couple of members of our detective bureau here, uh, speaking that night. Uh, as of right now, we have sixty five people that are registered. So, last time we had seventy eight, I believe, and then only thirty showed up.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll get a bigger interest this time around.
At six P M, Chief?
I'm sorry?
At six P M?
Six P M, yes.
Yes.
Council, anything for chief? Andrew?
I have one thing. Wednesday morning will be shut down. Call me.
Excellent.
Wednesday morning.
Thank you. Anything, Ray? Uh, fire chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As of today, engine two was returned from Campbell. After our second alarm, we did have electrical issues again, so Campbell will be back at the station tomorrow. You can troubleshoot, correct the issue, or they'll take it back to Campbell for further repairs. All of the units are currently in service. On this evening's agenda list, you will notice that we have three resolutions. Resolution eighty six is gonna authorize Reliable Fire Company to hold their annual boot drive. Resolution eighty nine to appoint Louis Blanco's William Alfred as firefighters. Resolution one oh one to appoint Isaac Moda as a firefighter. Earlier this month, we had a walk through the early learning center for our firefighters. Yesterday and tonight, our entire department was receiving a lecture on the art of breathing smoke, size of strategy and tactics. On this Thursday, officers and members will be attending engine company operations, strategy and tactics. This class is provided by East Franklin Fire Department. On Saturday, the remainder of our department will be recertified in C P R, basic life support and first aid. Firefighter Jennifer Baker started firefighter one, Middlesex County Fire Academy. This alone is a hundred and fifty nine hours. And also at this time, I would like to take a moment and honor past chief Robert Shandon, who recently passed away on February seventeenth. Chief Shandon was a life member of Reliable Fire Company, a member of the South River Fire Department for sixty four years. He was a member of the South River Exempt Association. Almost everyone in town at one time or another had the opportunity to meet and greet this man. He had a love of life, family, our department and our town. It's almost unheard of for an individual volunteer for sixty four years. If you knew Moose, you simply knew him as giving a handshake to you, a warm smile, and always saying he's a beautiful thing. Please keep his family in prayers and lots. Thank you.
Council, anything for the chief? Andrew?
I have nothing from that, Mayor.
Alyssa? All right.
I just have one thing, Mayor. Um, number ninety two, the authority award architectural and engineering design services. That's for the family required bathroom at the concession stand for the new playground.
Council, anything for, uh, Art?
Art, can you just give an update on the water meter project? I know we got a number of county where.
Because there, there are about five thousand water meters in town. We're down to about thirteen hundred, not stall. Um, Meter Tech, the company doing the installing, has tried every method possible, emails, phone calls, um, text messages. Uh, I'm now assigned someone from staff. They gave us the list. Um, we are making the phone call. Um, if they don't respond in ten days, we are sending them a regular mail letter. They don't respond in seven days, the regular mail letter, we'll be sending them a summons to court for failure to allow someone to access the meter. Um, and we hope that does it. There are a lot of them that I'm personally trying to take care of. All Leonardine Parkinson's, all the schools haven't responded yet. I personally reached out to them. And we're getting all their numbers together. Excuse me, and we will narrow that list down.
Council, anything for it? Councilman DeSantis.
I have nothing from that, Mayor. Councilman DeSantis. Uh, yes, the, uh, next quarter of education meeting is this Thursday, February twenty seventh at seven P M in the high school auditorium. We'd like to give a shout out to some of our athletes. Uh, Keone Lewis is the first female to qualify for the regions in wrestling. Ethan Chamberlain and Thomas Nielsen both took fourth in their district this past weekend, and Felipe Renadera took third in districts, which brings him to the regions, which are this weekend coming, coming up. And if he can take top four there, he would go to the states in Atlantic City. And Alex Gursby, one of our men's basketball players, scored his two thousand point against Kirkland Boy Magnet School. For those of you that don't know, they usually celebrate when you get to one thousand, so he has two thousand, which is twice as much, so he, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. It's, it's only happened a few times in school history, and Alex, uh, he's been a great student athlete and, uh, good representative of the town. From the recreation side, uh, registration is still open for spring sports. T-ball for fundamental instructional is gonna be mixed for boys and girls ages four through six, and they're going to start in mid-April. Softball for girls ages six through thirteen, and the team will compete at eight U, ten U and thirteen U. And baseball for boys ages seven through ten, with teams competing at eight U and ten U. We're also gonna have flag football for ages five through eighteen, and they're going to use a coed division and a girls' division. So they're trying to have an all-girls division for those age groups, uh, based on enrollment. So once the signups are settled, they'll see what they can do about having a coed mix and a full girls' division. Uh, the softball, baseball and flag football will start in mid-March. And to register, you can go to south river N J dot org, click departments, then parks and recreation, and you can see a link to enroll. And if you have any issues online, you can call the office at seven three two two five four 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 one two. Uh, we are also still looking for a tennis instructor for the spring program. Uh, we had a great young man that was doing that, but he moved. And Terry Chandler is, is searching for someone to take that over. Uh, if anyone has anyone that may be interested, they can email her at T Chandler at south river N J dot org. Or call the office at the same seven three two two five four 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 one two, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilman DeZimian.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the only thing I want to mention is, uh, just what the police chief mentioned, the neighborhood watch. Um, again, it's this Thursday at six o'clock here in this building. It's been successful. Last year, we had it several times, and please come out, those that are signed up, please do attend. It really, uh, is worth it, and you learn a lot more about the town and the safety, and, uh, you're also helping the police. Police are helping you. It's a joint, um, effort here. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Valles.
Um, I'm just gonna go over a couple of things in the library, even though I have a meeting with them tomorrow night, but there are some things coming up that you could have to register for. They're having a Dr. Seuss magic show on Monday, March third at six o'clock. Uh, something that's called vision boards for kids and teens. That's something that they would set up as their goals and aspirations. Also, you'd have to, these are all you have to register for. Family crochet, you can learn how to do granny squares. Um, and then a mindful breathing, monthly meditation classes. They're mon, they're Thursday, March sixth at six thirty. But again, there are many, many things that you can find out at those in the library on their website, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilman Krasinski.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on the Office on Aging, uh, they are urging all members who had been members before January of this year uh, to go down there and check your database and update it if necessary, whether it's your address or anything else too, whether you have any particular needs or whatever. Uh, they do wanna update their membership and their membership application. Also, the A A R P is still offering the free tax preparation. Uh, people sixty plus age are given preference. That would be at the East Brunswick Public Library and the Spotswood Office on Aging. You have to call ahead to schedule an appointment. Uh, East Brunswick has Mondays and Wednesdays, and call seven three two three nine zero six seven six seven. And the Spotswood Office is at One Arlington in Spotswood, and on Wednesdays only, and the call number is seven three two two five one three four three two. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Seula.
Yes, um, E D C, they are working really hard on promoting the businesses in town. They're looking for doing some things on Main Street. Um, they're working on another gathering of all the businesses in town, so everybody gets to know each other and how we can promote it a little bit better. Uh, their next meeting is on the nineteenth of March, and it's at the Senior Citizen Building on fifty five Route.
Hold on for my comments. I'd like to open it to the public. Five minutes. State your name and your address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jim Heskey, thirty eight Virginia Street. As far as the water project, I'm sure you're still at a very infancy stage of that, but hasn't been any decisions made yet, uh, on like the service lines. So, right now, the town basically lists the main, then the corporation connection from the main into the property is owned by the customer. If we're going down and replacing mains, we, I think we talked about replacing service lines also. So if we're replacing the service line, I imagine we're replacing the valve at the curb. And then attaching that to the service line going in. A couple meetings ago, I asked if that takes place, if the town is actually installing that, and the town then take ownership of that service line. Has there been any discussions on that?
No, I mean, it's still, it's still early.
Okay, still too early.
It's still early.
And then I'd also blow up about, um, rather than leaving the existing mains in, in ground, uh, we can remove that. Uh, get the mark out, stays of that nature, so I'm sure that that's all very relevant too. Um, parking issue. On Stevens Street, where all the meters were taken out when the movie people came in, there's still a parking meter, a double meter that's missing. A break, it's the next, the last one before you get to George Street.
Page three one.
Missing some revenue there, plus I have to see the same car parked there. Chief, can we just give them a ticket because there's no meter?
Not enough.
Try, try and get some revenue later. Um, I'm glad to hear we're looking at a new building company. Uh, I think residents, all the, uh, uh, water and electric customers are beyond frustrated at this current building company. And I just wanna say, having an inside knowledge of this, um, this is not anything associated with the borough. The Borough South River, people down there, before you watch it history, this is out of their hands. The problem is, is the building company. So when we're not getting bills as electric customers or water cups and customers, it's not because the people there or the borough is doing anything. It's the, it's the company itself that's doing this. So we're doing the right thing of telling them, I mean, it's, um, too frustrating for everybody associated with that. Um, but then my last comment, see if I can reorient. Oh, um, if we have that many people that have not responded for the water meters, just from my old utility days, I'm not sure if we're bound by different rules and regulations since we're a municipality rather than a investor on utility. I think an old termination of service will probably get them quicker than maybe going to court, maybe be a little cheaper. So, I don't know if we wanna just threaten the termination of water service. Um, I know that usually spurs people to, uh, get them, uh, off their tuff to do something. So, because again, the borough owns the water here.
Right.
So, we need to have access to our equipment. So, throw that there as a possibility. No cash, no splash.
Good evening, the mayor and council. Uh, my name is Edwin Brennan, sixty four Whitehead Avenue. Um, I have two questions. So I was, I'm a little bit sorry, um, I missed the first bit, uh, ordinance reading. Just was curious, is this ordinance twenty, uh, twenty twenty five for paths as well? That's great, that's great. Thank you for your work, Paul. Um, my, what's your second question is, could the council please confirm which communication channel the borough will use to notify potential developers of the application submission date and timing for classified suitability applications? You're talking about print towns? Uh, yes, for a classified. So what happens is, there's a Gestapo period, one step is passed, and we post, post a minimum advertisement, whatever they did. And then the first couple walks in with the application, we'll be reviewing that. And which advertisement do you guys use to?
The Hall News.
The Hall News?
Houston, yeah.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. And usually the, you said the, what was the, should we use the?
Gestapo.
Gestapo, Gstaad?
Twenty days.
Twenty days, okay. Tomorrow? Tomorrow. Tomorrow, okay, great. Thank you so much.
Anyone else from the public? First call, second call.
Motion to close the public.
Motion by Council President Seula, seconded by Council, Councilman DeZimian.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that's second, please, for the council resolution.
Whereas resolution twenty twenty one authorizes the Borough Council to utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. And therefore, being as hereby resolved, if the blowers of resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, is it the same or individually acted upon? Consent resolutions twenty twenty five eighty six to twenty twenty five post one oh seven. Eighty six, authorizing the Southern Fire Department to conduct a boot drive. Eighty seven, authorizing the requisition of funds for payment for custodian of school monies. Eighty eight, resolution authorizing a abandoned vehicle auction. Eighty nine, appointment of Louis Blanco and William Alfred as firefighters to Summit Engine Company. Ninety, authorize a construction center permit refund. Ninety one, authorizing transfer of funds for Middlesex County Housing and Community Development Agency for park improvements. Ninety two, authorizing the award for architectural and engineering design services. Ninety three, submission of the twenty twenty five H C D block grant proposal. Ninety four, authorizing an agreement with fire metering solutions. Ninety five, appointment of a crossing yard. Ninety six, authorize certain utility refunds. Ninety seven, appointment of a part-time public works employee for the sanitation department. Ninety eight, authorizing the notice of request for proposals for land use for professionals. Ninety nine, appointment of O E M members. One hundred, authorizing a change order. One oh one, authorizing the appointment of Isaac Moda as firefighter for the Southern Fire Department. One oh two, except February third, twenty twenty five, regular and executive session minutes. One oh three, authorize the builder claims list. One oh four, property tax refund. One oh five, authorizing approval to submit grant application to N J D O T for improvements to Leonardine Avenue. One-on-five, authorizing approval to submit a grant application to N J D O T for improvements to Leonardine Avenue, Prentice Avenue, and Barrow Street. One-on-six, authorizing approval to submit a grant application with the N J D O T for improvements to Darren Street, Bailey Street, and John Street. And then seven, authorizing application for the inclusive healthy communities grant program.
Well, motion. Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second. Second by Councilman Kraszewski.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman DeSantis?
Yes, with the exception of number one-on-three, abstaining from twenty-five dash zero-zero-five-two-one.
Councilman DeZingian?
Yes.
Councilman Janikopoulos?
Yes.
Councilman Gertenski?
Yes.
Council President Seale?
Yes, with the abstention from eighty-six, eighty-nine, one-on-one, and on one-on-three, twenty-four dash zero-three-one-seven-nine, twenty-four dash zero-three-five-nine-two, and twenty-five zero-four-two-four.
Alright, we have nothing to do with business. We don't want to start to film your comments. Now, Councilman Kraszewski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to thank all of our public service workers, our police, fire, D P W and everything, and probably Johnson for all the services they provide to our community. Uh, I'd also like to offer congratulations to Calvin on his retirement, uh, at the D P W. Forty-one years.
When is his last day?
Quite a run. With that, uh, D P W has done a wonderful job as far as salt in the streets. Uh, I can't tell whether it's snowed or if it's salted. So, with that, I thank yous again. With that, that's all I have for here. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Ballas.
When is Calvin's last day?
Today.
Today? Once?
Yes.
Yeah.
Party. Yeah, the party.
Forty-one years.
Forty-one years. Um, I know I called D P W this week down at Olchaski and Prentice. I guess everybody's slumps are getting pumped out into Cam Avenue. It has a huge thing. Olchaski has runway here, John Street, George Street. I guess we really can't do anything about that. I can't keep an eye on it and make sure they get sanded. Because they're quite wide.
So, that's one of the roads that's going to be getting fixed.
Yeah. Um, now, I know, I, I always complain about my street, but I'll complain about what exactly? Where they're coming up to park to get into that new school. You're never going to get a car truck up that street between eight-thirty and library.
It's the same at Johnson Place too.
Ever. I don't know. They're parking there. They're not supposed to be parking there. So I don't know what, I know you can't be everywhere at once, but.
We're all up there in masses there, playing around. Six or seven cars.
Because I felt so bad, this poor woman was trying to get out of the front of our house on warning side. She couldn't get out of her driveway. I know the feeling. I feel bad. I feel bad. I don't know where these people are going to go.
There's just too many people in one area. Um, we talked about that in our police safety meeting.
Yeah.
We, I had all my, my guys and girls up there. It's just, it, it's just too many people at one time. There's, there's no parking spaces for any of the parents to go. So they just ride around in circles. Uh, they, they pull over on the side of the road, uh, you know, just, just to wait. I mean, the afternoon is worse than the morning.
Yeah, I'd have to go there at nine o'clock in the morning. It was not fun.
We, we've been there for the last five days.
I know the flow is hard. You gotta watch the ones that just stop their cars and put on their blinkers. And then walk their kids up the hill. They're not supposed to do that.
There's just no parking.
It's like the, well, by, well, the schools, not just our schools. Um, down, uh, by the old junior high is bad. You know, by Charles Street is bad. It's just, I guess, too many people in one area.
Yeah.
Yeah. But just be careful because, uh, I mean, the kids are running in between cars, trying to get across the street. Some are not crossing by the crossing cards where they should be, especially on Johnson Place in Hope Side.
Johnson.
They go halfway up and they just go across, and some poor persons, something's going to happen. And what do you do then? I, I don't know how you can tell the kids, go to the corner. There's a crossing card there. Use them. You had to yell at some, you could tell them, you had to yell at people the other day. I'm kidding. Um, but the same thing, the weather's getting nicer. It's staying lighter longer. On the way down here, kids were on their scooters. Luckily, they had lights that held us, so that was good. Just be careful of the, the walkers, the joggers, the kids. Uh, we want to make sure everybody stays safe. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman DeSantis.
Uh, just to, uh, congratulations to Calvin. You left the ice with him, and congratulations on forty-one years. That's amazing. That's all I have for you.
Councilman DeSantis.
Uh, I think we're the same with Calvin. He's been a staple in that, for the borough for a long time. I'm forty-one years old, so he's, he's been working here as long as I've been here, so. I, it's great to hear that he's going off into the next chapter.
Councilman John, the couples. Yep, um, I just wanted to thank D P W for going around, and I know there's a lot of pumps, like Donnie was saying, that were pumping out water and turning to ice and ange and D P W, they're out there and they're, they're going out heavy and breaking up the sites and getting that out of the way so it's not a hazard. And, uh, we'll keep on talking about what we can, but I just, thank you. Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, congratulations, Calvin. Been with you for a lot of years. You're definitely going to enjoy your retirement. I can definitely say that. Um, again, to our D P W, great job. Uh, with all the high winds we had, um, our electric utility was by far first, first-class all the way. Their maintenance and all the work that they put into the, to the borough is, it pays off when you have the weather like that. Our road department, sanitation, they all did a great job of plowing, salting. They kept the town safe. And that's by far the best anybody can do. Um, just one quick thing on a fire note. Um, we've had a few incidents where people were smoking outside of their homes and setting mulch on fire, grass on fire. Um, and we've had a few where it got pretty bad. So please, if you are a smoker, be careful. Make sure you extinguish your cigarette in a bucket, an ashtray, something where it's not going to fall into a garbage can, a recycling can, anything like that. If you're on a deck, don't put the cigarette out on your deck surface. Put it out in a, in a proper extinguishing place. I mean, we gotta be safe, and it's common sense. So please be very careful if you're smoking. And that's all I have.
Here we are. Well, first of all, I want to thank the, uh, council along with, uh, Art and, uh, Joe. It's been a long-waited for a building company. We're finally replacing them. They're going to go into effect on March first. Uh, it's going to be on, it's going to finally be on board within six months or so. There's still going to be a couple of pickups here in there. Uh, this has been, uh, long awaited. This is something that's going to bring different avenues to paying the bills and making it easier for residents. Recycling. I know a lot of people have been complaining about, uh, recycling, how, uh, sanitation doesn't do a good job. I understand. Uh, I know I've had quite a few meetings with the county. I'm happy to announce that the county finally signed a new company that is not only going to have one-armed bandits, it's also going to make it cheaper on South River. So you're going to be seeing that hopefully within the next month or two, uh, once they deploy one.
Will they take the bags now or not?
Well, I don't know that. I know you're going to get a ninety, ninety-gallon, uh, garbage can that's going to be dropped off by the company themselves. So we are charged. So thank you to the county for all the trouble they're making up. Potholes. I know that the weather is breaking. Uh, please bear with the D P W. They are doing as much as they can. It's not easy. Uh, they deal with a lot more than just the potholes. They deal with trees coming down, curbs, you name it. They're out there doing it. I know that we have been hearing about this throughout the southern part of the state, uh, where there is a supposedly birth flu. Let me explain what this is. And it happens more about, it happens more around parts than anything else. Flying ducks that are deceased, don't get near them. Don't walk on the feces. Keep your animals away from them. Don't try to come into your house. You see it, call the police. Let them know. It's the best thing we'll tell you. Uh, I want to also thank the D O T for helping us get more roads under our belts. I know, uh, every year they do their best to, uh, help us. Electricity mess. My favorite topic. A lot of people through social media, and I'm using social media because they're bad-mouthing, or I should say speculating what the town is doing. I'm going to start off by saying, I thank what our budget committee has done in the last past four or five years. With the battery project and everybody else's electricity is going up, ours isn't, staying where it's at. Next year, they're going to get hit again with electricity, uh, tax, uh, electricity taxing. We're not. Once again, we're budgeting. Battery project is actually doing a very, very good job. So if anybody's out there to badmouth what we are doing, this is probably by far the best project the administration has actually applied to this town. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Go see Joe at, uh, Forty-eight Washington, and he'll explain it to, to you in detail.
Decrease rates last year.
Yeah, yes, that's right. Decreased rates last year. Now, Calvin Jackson. As you all heard, Calvin has been beyond the word motivated, determined, um, loved for the town forty-one years. Now, what we don't know about the D P W is there is no such thing as them sitting in a, in a building with worms. They go out every single day, regardless of the weather, regardless of the element, regardless of what resident may be upset with. And they do their job. And Calvin himself is a living proof of it. Forty-one years sitting on the back of that garbage truck and never once complained. Showed up to work and always devoted himself to that department of the goods. He's going to be surely missed. I know we're going to see him in town. He lives right here. So if you see him, give him a shout out. Calvin, thank you for everything you have done for this borough. Condolences to the Moose family. Uh, he's going to be surely missed. As you all heard, he's been a staple to the Fire Department for sixty-four years. And last and final, as, uh, Councilwoman Ballas said, the weather's getting better. Please be aware of those kids coming out, in and out of those cars. They're outside now. They're trying to enjoy the weather. The weather's getting better. Hopefully, there's no more snow. But I wish everybody, um, happy and health. What happened? Our motion to the close. Motion by Councilwoman Ballas, second by Council President Seale.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.